Like to call the Thursday, May first, 2025 work session to order. First off, we'll do a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
A pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, rule call please.
Dr. Baldino?
Here.
Mr. Cannon? Ms. Donahue? Mr. Eileen?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Knob? Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Scab?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Six members present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to announce that this evening, we had an executive session from 5:40 to 5:50, and then also another one at 5:53 to 5:57. This was for legal and personnel issues. Or 6:57, 5:53 to 6:57. Thank you. Okay, so first off, um, I guess we have a presentation. The first one is Virtual Academy. Mr. Peters?
That's when I had too many links in, he was worried about slowing down.
So just wanted to take an opportunity.
Yeah. That's awesome.
Take an opportunity to talk to the board this evening, a little bit about our Virtual Academy here in Keystone Central School District. Have a short presentation with a couple of video links in. The presentation itself will be shared, not only through our website, but also with other families as we recruit new students. So it's kind of a tool that will be used also to educate our administration and our teaching staff as we enter into next year, so that we can try to make sure everybody is familiar with what current offerings we have and how we can support students throughout the district. So obviously, the purpose of our presentation, am I coming through that good enough? Introduce the KCSD Virtual Academy to stakeholders. We're going to highlight some of the key features and benefits, encourage informed enrollment and support, and then we'll share a little bit about our progress, our outcomes, and our future goals. So currently, our partners in the Virtual Academy are often what we reference as COLA and CAOLA. Central Intermediate Unit 10 is our intermediate unit, and they are the current partner that we work with. And then they also work with the central, excuse me, the Capital Area Online Learning Assessment. And that is also one of the key partners that we've utilized as we've developed over the recent years. A little bit of an overview, as you see the link there, there's information in this link in regards to what CAOLA is, a short video. I'm going to save that one, and because I believe the next video clip will give you a little bit more information. But as you see, CAOLA is the largest online learning consortium in Pennsylvania, and the program currently has 11 Pennsylvania intermediate units and 140 school entities in Pennsylvania. So 940,000 course enrollments, 115,000 students that are being educated, and 140 school entity partners. Got it, Ed. Uh-oh. I lost it. There it is. Gotcha. Couldn't see it. So this video is a brief overview. It is created through CAOLA.
CAOLA is a revolution in online education, offering K through 12 students customized online learning experiences while remaining enrolled in their local school district. This means students earn a diploma from their high school and participate in school-sponsored clubs, events, sports, and other extracurricular activities, all while learning from home. With CAOLA, students don't compromise their social life because we believe that in-school involvement is just as important as the coursework. The Capital Area Online Learning Association, or CAOLA, is the largest online learning consortium in Pennsylvania, consisting of more than 150 school districts and 30,000 students. The high-quality, flexible nature and diversity of available courses create online learning options that meet an extraordinary variety of student needs. This includes full-time online curriculum and single-course options, onsite or remote classes, STEM and foreign language courses, career electives, half-day vocational and technical options, and solutions for students with disabilities or health issues impacting classroom attendance. CAOLA programs adapt to fit individual needs so students can learn at the right pace for them, at the time and place they choose. With over 400 courses available in grades K through 12, CAOLA uniquely engages students and addresses multiple learning styles. Whether incorporating interactive gaming, streaming videos and podcasts, or providing on-demand tutoring and objective assessments, CAOLA is committed to the student experience and future success. CAOLA courses lead to high-demand, high-paying careers, such as robotics, health science, and business management. Students can even earn industry certifications before graduation. Students are not alone in their learning journey either. Local school districts provide mentors who will develop close relationships with both the student and their family to achieve success. A parent portal also offers parents immediate 24/7 access to students' grades to support progress. The CAOLA experience is customized online learning, adaptable to meet each student's individual needs, all while remaining active and engaged in their local school district. Contact CAOLA today and be a part of the revolution.
So a little bit more to follow up that about who we are in Keystone Central. We are Virtual Academy, covers K through 12. We're looking for students who are in need of flexible scheduling options, who at times prefer a home-based environment. Sometimes they're pursuing sports, arts, or work opportunities. Students who may face health or social-emotional challenges. Students who sometimes just thrive in individual learning environments. Through CAOLA, as referenced in the video, they offer more than 400 courses. And so it provides a very diverse opportunity for our students to be able to select from a wide array of classes. I think the complete course listing, if you begin to look in it, and it is linked in here, I won't go into that right now, but there are options there that you can look at that are programs that cannot be found here in Keystone Central in any other opportunity other than the online program. And I think that's one of the crucial things, that it does provide new opportunities for our students to learn and to grow and to access information that they may not have gotten through our in-person curriculum. One of the new features that is coming to CAOLA is the dual enrollment option. And we certainly use dual enrollment right now. We partner with a variety of different universities, but through the online learning opportunities, Edison has created a dual enrollment program. The program will expand CAOLA's catalog to include hundreds of college-level courses from regionally accredited schools across the nation, again, covering a wide variety of topics. And so again, it provides us with an extension to some of the things that we already have in place. And I think this is a new opportunity to look at dual enrollment from a different lens, where we can, again, expand opportunities for students beyond where our current dual enrollment opportunities and arrangement and partnerships are. Some of the keys to the dual enrollment accessibility, it makes it easier for students to access college-level courses regardless of their geographical location. So again, being K through 12, these programs will be available to the Bucktail Campus as well as the Central Mountain Campus. Flexibility, ideal for students with extracurricular commitments or those who want to explore other subject areas. Equity helps bridge the equity gap by offering opportunities to students who may not have an easy access to physical college campuses. Some of our students drive to the universities, they go there. So it again extends some opportunities to students who may not have some of those same opportunities. Diverse course offerings, it opens up a wider range of courses and subjects that may not be available at the student's high school. It will certainly expand our dual enrollment opportunities that we can currently offer. Preparation for higher education, gain experience being a college student and understand the expectations and the academic rigor. Cost savings, and I think this is a crucial one. It allows students to earn college credit up to an associate degree while in high school and saves money on post-secondary costs, which I think is very important in our community and to our students. It's a more global perspective. It offers opportunities for students to interact with peers and educators from different parts of the country, and in some cases, even the world. Personalized learning pathways, and we obviously already work and are establishing different pathways. So this again extends students' explore chosen majors or career paths while in high school and engage in relevant and exciting course options. So I look forward to that opportunity. It will be something new that we are rolling out through our program as we go into the next school year. And so again, trying to learn a little bit more about it is new to CAOLA, but it is something that's going to be brand-new to us.
I'm sorry, which one? I'm sorry, I missed the first, which one is mostly new?
So the whole dual enrollment piece through CAOLA?
The whole thing.
Is something that we have not utilized in the past.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So one of the conversations that we recently had, a little bit more, and some of the board members have been a part of that, is why choose the KCSD Virtual Academy? And so we believe it expands access to quality education for diverse learners, supports a personalized and flexible learning pathway, meets the needs of students with health, mobility, or scheduling challenges, and it keeps KCSD competitive and innovative. And one of the conversations around that, we talked a lot about the other online learning and cyber schools that our students are choosing. And so I think that's something that we keep at the forefront of our conversations. We have our own Keystone Central Virtual Academy, and we're proud of that. And so through it, we offer access to our school counselors, to our special education services, to our technology support. Students through our Virtual Academy can access additional mental health resources. They still participate in our athletics and extracurriculars, and they're still able to participate in special events such as our dances, our assemblies, and PBIS opportunities. And so one of the areas that I really see students accessing is the CTC programs as well as online. And so they seems to be a higher population of students that come in, they want to do the CTC for multiple blocks a day, and then they choose to go off-campus and do some of their online learning and for their other courses. And so I think it's just one more opportunity that we see our students taking advantage of, and I think it would be enticing for others to again be able to access those CTC programs. As referenced, some of the unique opportunities. So in our program, there are variety of flexible scheduling options that don't exist in every cyber or online program. So for instance, you can be a full-time online at-home student or a full-time online in here at school because we have our own online room. We have some students that come in, they do nothing but online courses, but they're here all day. We also have students that do hybrid. We consider that classes that they do in-person and online. For example, as I referenced, they do CTE, and then they also do online at-home, or they may do CTE and then come into our online classroom. Some students do a combination of in-person classes. They may know their skill set, they need to be in-person for a math class or an English class, but then they feel like they can take some of their elective options online. And so we see students that choose to do that. We also have in-person in the building for some classes and online in the online room for others. So again, just a variety of different things that we feel we can offer that not every online program does. Another piece of the CAOLA features for us is not only the 400 classes, but there are five different learning platforms that are all linked in there. The platform that we see used the most is Edison Learning, but we do see students that will use others because they offer courses in those platforms that we cannot access. And so I think in most situations, when you see some of the other online learning schools, they have a platform that they use for everything. In ours, we have five different options that students can choose from. So as we talk about our program and what we want to do, one of the goals that I've set for myself and my staff is we want to continue to grow and we want to continue to improve. And one of the things that we feel is most important in that is getting feedback. And so we've recently put out a couple of surveys. This online survey was geared towards students and families who choose to use other online schools, trying to get a better understanding of why. Is it something that they weren't happy with with us? Is it something that another school provides that we don't? And so that survey is linked in there and has been shared out. My secretary had hand-wrote 500 different invitations to other people to send this out so that they could complete it. The other part then was we created a survey that was geared towards our current students that are in online learning, and what do they like? Why are they choosing it? What aspects of the program do they feel benefits them? And are there areas that we could continue to try to improve? So again, I think that's crucial, that we're open to the idea that we can continue to grow and improve, and we want that feedback, whether it's from individuals who are not utilizing us or from individuals who are, and why they feel like our program is the best fit for them. I won't go into this too far, but I know that it was a recent topic that we talked about. I know Joni did a presentation, and I know that many of you are aware. The cost of students going to other online learning options, schools within the state of Pennsylvania or otherwise, is extreme. And so for us, typically, it is $300 a class. Students take up to eight credits a year for a total of about $2,400 for a student to access our program. If a student is a regular education student and they go outside of the school district, it's a $15,000 cost. If that student has an IEP, it's a $30,000 cost. And so when you look at those numbers, I think part of the reason why I wanted to bring that to everybody tonight is we want our students back. We want them to want to be a part of our program and our schools. And so I want the community to be aware of these differences. I want them to know that if they had experiences in the past that they were not happy with, that we're willing to continue to look into them, to grow. Our program is expanding, as we've talked about dual enrollment and some of the other options. And so maybe we weren't always the school of choice, but we want to be. And so I think that's the most important piece of the conversation for us at this time, is that we want to bring those students back to Keystone Central, and if there are ways that we can improve in doing so, we're willing to do that. That's all I have as part of the presentation. If anybody had any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer.
Elizabeth?
Thank you. Always a pleasure, Mr. Peters.
Thank you.
Between athletics and everything else, it's always a breath of fresh air. I'm really interested in that dual program that you said, the new one that just is coming up. Now, here's a question. I'm not expecting an answer, but something that's been looming out there for about 12 years is some sort of hybrid between the cyber school and the brick-and-mortar classroom. Now, you know, we have to buy the software packages for the brick-and-mortar, and they're buying software packages for their on-line. Has there been any potential communication, there might be a bridge there in the future? Or is that conversation so far out that it's not even?
I certainly think it's a conversation that occurs. How that looks for each individual district, I think, you know, there are different parameters that would impact that. I think one of the advantages for us, as I referenced in working with our intermediate unit as well as with CAOLA, and I think in working with them and that partnership, it provides us with a broader opportunity to have those conversations. Whereas in some of those other situations, we've talked a little bit about how much money they have, how they have an excess of money. And so some of those programs are looking to offer some of the same things that we're talking about, access to CTC. I know in talking with Mr. Lynch, some of the schools have reached out to us to see what it would cost them to partner with our CTC programs and those conversations. And I know that initially in those conversations, they didn't want to pay the cost because basically they're giving back the money to us in some of those situations. And so, but I do think those are important conversations to have, and certainly we would welcome any of those conversations to, you know, be brought to the table to see how we can improve our program.
Okay, and also, I'm very encouraged how you're partnering with CTC. That, I think, your marketing, spot-on. Good job.
Well, I can't take a lot of the credit. CTC sells itself, but it certainly is something that I see more and more students taking advantage of.
Yep, it's great.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Student Government Reports. Let's see, we'll start out with Central Mountain Middle School, and I believe that's Andrew Wolfe.
Good evening, Keystone Central School District Board. My name is Andrew Wolfe. I'm the president of Central Mountain Middle School Student Government. Currently at the middle school, eighth graders are finishing up their last week of PSSA testing. Our Algebra I students will be taking the Keystone's in a few weeks. As this is the last meeting that I will be presenting at, I will give you an overview of what has happened at Central Mountain Middle School so far this year. This year, we have worked on everything from eighth-grade graduation celebrations to improving our school's safety. We opened the bistro for students to have lunch with their friends. Our redesign committee worked alongside Mrs. Berger and the design company to create plans for new cafeteria seating designs. Our joint committee of student government and PBIS team worked together to begin a tradition of having eighth-grade graduation ceremonies. We worked with the principals to address safety concerns during lockdowns and fire drills. We worked with Dr. Redman to address bus safety concerns. And just as of today, we opened a concession stand at the home middle school track meets. None of this would have been possible without the amazing group of representatives and administrators. Over the course of my four years at the middle school, I've seen so many reasons to be proud to be a Wildcat. Central Mountain Middle School was truly a great school to be at. Although I will miss the middle school next year, I'm excited to have my first year at Central Mountain High School. It has been a great honor serving as the Central Mountain Middle School Student Government President this past year. In particular, I enjoyed the responsibility of being president as well as the ability to be involved in improving our school. I truly appreciate your continued support of our school. Thank you for your time. I hope you all have a good summer, and I'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Congratulations.
All right, next up is Central Mountain High School. Claire?
A rock star.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Good evening. At the high school, a lot of fun events are happening as we quickly approach the end of the year. Just today, we had our spring carnival where students, without any demerits, got to go outside for an hour and a half, play outside games like cornhole, buy snacks from club booths, and play carnival games. It was absolutely beautiful. I got sunburnt. I don't regret a thing. I was making lemonade for a rotary, and it was beautiful outside. Prom was last weekend. Many kids attended. The DJ was great, and sophomores and juniors did a great time decorating for the first time. They also had prom king queen. It was super nice. It was well-received. There were no hard feelings. Everyone was supportive, which I think is really great and important. Senior Spirit Week was this week. It included Decades Day and Dress Like Your Favorite Teacher Day. And Ball is next weekend. Many seniors and their dates are incredibly excited as this is our last dance and have been planning their outfits for months. Speaking of seniors, as our final year ends, senioritis is running rampant through the building. Many events are quickly approaching, including baccalaureate on June 1st, graduation on June 4th, and the senior awards nights. Senior night for spring sports are all coming up, and the choir and orchestra concerts are on May 7th and the 8th. We hope to see you at some of the events. AP and Keystone testing are also rapidly approaching, as we wish everyone good luck for them. At the high school, things are starting to wrap up. Auditions for graduation were last week. Senior pranks have started. You'll see Mr. Burley's office in a couple of days.
We want pictures.
Where's she at?
I have pictures, on vacation. And many students are looking for summer jobs. Speaking of, we have a job fair, I believe it's next week, to help students look for short-term jobs but also careers. We appreciate everyone who has helped set up these opportunities. They are incredibly helpful and valuable for many students. Also coming up, tomorrow, a group of German students are coming to Mr. Maidenford's classes to interview American students and get a better understanding of the American school system. And we can't forget that a group of 18 Germany exchange students are leaving after graduation on the 22nd of June until July 3rd to go to Germany. We've all been keeping in contact with our partners and practicing our German on Duolingo, making lists of food to try and things to see while we're over there, and of course, sending many Snapchat pictures and text messages to keep in contact. In student government news, yesterday, we had an intense discussion about how we define our group and how it differs from other clubs and organizations in the building. We have made it clear in our constitution and since the group's inception that our job is not only to make positive change, but make positive change through affecting policy. We have had a few small conversations about this topic before, but yesterday was when we truly got into the nitty-gritty. We discussed our role relating to student morale and how we differ from student council and the class officers. In the future meetings, we will continue to discuss this, as many of our group members, including myself, didn't realize how much of a conflict this was until yesterday. The discussion was intense, and I think it's important we learn how to deal with those conversations. But it's really clear, and I think it's really important to me and a lot of other members, that this is more than fun events. This is about making the lives of students better through things like meetings and discussions and policy. It's just important, and the integrity of our group is incredibly important. So we want to keep that intact. On another note, our elections for student government officers will be May 12th, nominations being the 5th. Many of our officers are seniors, so this moment of passing the baton will be bittersweet. But to say we're excited for the future student government and to see what they accomplish would be an absolute understatement. We are so incredibly proud of the work we have done and what we've accomplished just this year and since I've started high school. Myself and all the other graduating members hope we have served our school, peers, and community well in our time in student government. Good luck to all the new members and officers next year. Thank you. Next meeting, you will see someone else?
All right, well, thank you, Claire. Appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's been great.
Deeply, deeply.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Glad that it's over now?
I don't know about glad. It's been a good time.
Okay, all right.
Ready for new opportunities.
There you go.
But spoken like a politician. It's all right. New things, different things.
Yeah.
Not necessarily better, just.
Cool. All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, just going to be brief. As you heard from our two excellent student ambassadors to the boards, there are a lot of things going on in the school district. There's testing going on all over the place and more testing to come, and that takes up a lot of our energy, and it will until we get through all of the keystones and everything. Joni and I have been all over the place and at staff meetings and student government meetings and leadership class meetings, talking about the budget, similar to what we are working with in Finance Committee when we present kind of the budget and how we came up with the budget and all that sort of thing. We've been doing that same kind of presentation with student and staff groups. It was actually the students who asked us first to come and present them. We thought it was a great idea, and then from there, we said, well, let's go to all of our staff meetings and do the same thing. It's been very well-received, and it's been, I think, eye-opening for a lot of our staff Halti as they learn a little bit more about budgeting process and what our budget, it looks like this year and what our projections are for next year. I think it's been a really good move for us to do that, to kind of be a little more transparent to our staff Halti about how all of that works. Last thing I want to touch on, I have mentioned this before, and you heard last month from the Bucktail Group about their. last month from the Bucktail Group about their efforts to change the state fossil to the Heiner Potentum. They have been recently invited by Senator Fetterman to go to Washington DC and
Really?
Their idea there.
Do you need any chaperones?
So we're working through the process of just making sure that can happen and uh, and we're pretty excited for them. We know that Senator Dush has said that he's going to introduce the bill and wants the students to come down, but it's, I'm pretty excited for their crew and really appreciate Ms. Witty from the, um, from the county who kind of got this whole thing started.
Yep.
And it's, it's, as I told Senator Dush, it seems like this thing is really getting legs, but pun might be a little bit too much.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, hearing of visitors. Do we have any visitors signed up? No? Okay. So, let's see here. Okay. Next up, uh, committee reports, facilities.
Okay, the, uh, facilities committee met on April 22nd. Week or so ago. And we had a very short agenda this time. First of all, the first item that we was, we had a presentation from Mr. Hoy, kind of giving us an overview on the, the district's purchasing processes. Um, the different thresholds for the different purchases, um, the amounts of when it has to be bid and quotes and so on and so forth. Also explained the difference between the federal and the state rules. And, uh, gave us a pretty good overview of some things that, uh, on specifics that we probably weren't aware of, at least not totally anyway. So it was, it was a good, uh, good presentation from, from Mr. Hoy on that. We also, the second item we discussed was the upgrading of the need to upgrade the, the P A systems at both the athletic facility here and also at the stadium and also in the, uh, Central Mountain High School gym. They're both woefully old and outdated. And if you've ever been to an act, uh, to an athletic event, either, in either venue, you'll know that they've had, uh, their share of issues with both of those systems. So that is something that's been on the 10-year plan. And we would, uh, recommend that we, we replace those. I know that we had a discussion about maybe looking at some possible sponsorships with, within the community. And I think we were going to have Mr. Lindsay look into what, what legalities were being involved with that. So, um, that will be on your agenda later on. And also, uh, I asked that we revisit the middle school hand dryer, um, topic. Um, as you recall, uh, last time, um, we had, um, the president of the Mill Hall Borough visit us and, and brought up the issue of the sewer problems and so on that they continue continually have and have had for a number of years. And so I wanted to revisit that and discuss it a little bit more here tonight. I do have some rationale for doing that, which I will share when we get to that point on the agenda and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next up, personnel.
Personnel committee met on April 17th, um, and just discussed some ongoing personnel issues.
Okay, next up, uh, safety and security committee.
We met on the April 17th. We discussed some upgrades to a possible security system and, uh, we talked about some stuff that was brought up with Senator Dush and Representative Borowitz up in Renova and we're just looking at some options on making changes throughout the school system. That's about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, uh, treasures report. Do we have any questions on that? Financial reports, any questions on that?
If we could, um, if with the chair's permission, uh, could we have Joni, uh, speak a little bit about the treasures? I'm sorry, the financial reports.
Okay.
So as you can see, the new financial reports have a whole new look. The, um, which is, which is exciting. So these are, um, through Forecast 5, which is now frontline. What they did was they surveyed all of their Pennsylvania customers, um, all of the school districts in Pennsylvania. And this is the format that they present to their board. And, um, it seems to work well getting the information across, um, revenues and expenses. So I thought what we do today, since it's the first time we're looking at this information, is just do a high-level overview. And then at the finance committee meeting, we can do a deeper dive, um, into the information and, um, um, you know, I plan on doing budgeted versus projected and, you know, to offer finance committee and the board, um, a whole selection of different kinds of reports. So this is a snapshot of this information and also this information will be more current. I think right now, um, you receive like February's information. This is actually March's information. Sure, you're going to receive data more, more frequently, more current. So this is a snapshot of where we are. So as of March, um, we have $34.6 million worth of local revenue. It seems high that that would be 88%. However, um, remember that our real estate taxes are collected July through December. So you're going to receive a large portion of those, um, almost 90%, almost, well, 75% by January. And what's nice about this report, we haven't had in the past, it compares 23, 24 to 25 as of March. So they're all year-to-date as of March. That, it, it, that's what it would look like if there was an average increase in all the taxes across the board. So in this bucket is real estate, earned income, business privilege, um, local, your local L S T tax. It's also E-rate, adult ed, your interest, your investments. That's included all of your local revenue. The next, uh, graph over is your state revenue, which is your subsidies. Again, you'll see the, the different years in comparison and you'll see the pretty even gradual increase in, in our state subsidies. And then in the last bucket is your federal revenue, which looks a little off, but remember back in 23, that's all that ESER money that we received in. That's why that 23 looks so high. 24, we also had ESER money. 25, we were spending the end. So in, um, July and August and September, we are spending the remaining of this year, the remaining of our ESER money. So next year in 26, you're going to see that drop dramatically down to about $2 million. So that graph will look, look much different next year. So that's the top, it's actually the top part of the graph. So if you go down, thank you, Colton. This is actually is the, the data that, um, the numbers, this is actually the numbers that go with the graphs of above. So, which is nice because it compares, um, year-to-date 24, year-to-date 25, and then the budgeted amount for 25 with your percentages. So it's, it's comparing your percent year-to-date to budget. And it is doing that for all your local, state and your federal revenues. Which interesting about this slide is really at the bottom, you see the 4.4%. So we've had a 4.4% increase in revenue over last year. So this will be the new report that, that we'll be using to show your revenues. So we'll go ahead and go to the next slide for the next report.
The percentages in, at the top.
Mm-hmm.
What, what are they percentages of?
So we have received in, let's just take the local. We've received 87.88% of our budgeted, local revenue of our budgeted amount.
Okay. So.
Makes sense? Okay.
Why is the federal, is this got to do with the?
Okay, I, I should have mentioned that. Very, very good. So when.
They're awfully generous.
I wish.
I find that hard to believe.
I wish. So remember, this is 24-25 budget, which was a year and a half ago that this budget was created and approved. That, that, we decided then that all of our ESER money would be used in 24-25. When we got towards the end of that, so that budget's already done. Now we're sitting in 24-25. We decided in, um, May, June or April, May, that we'd actually like to push some of that ESER money into the next year because we had July, August and September to spend it into the next year. And we wanted to use those resources for additional curriculum, books and so forth for the next fiscal year. And we could do that. We had the opportunity to do that. So I had over budgeted the revenues, having done the budget so early in 24-25 and kind of under budgeted them in, in the year we're sitting in.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
That, that is, is, that's, I know whenever anyone looks at this slide, I knew that's where you could come. Because when it says it's 127% of our total budget under federal.
No, it's not 127% of our total budget.
It's of the federal revenue.
Just a federal revenue.
That's why I'm just saying, I can understand. It's not your fault. I'm just saying, that's how it's confusing. It looks like anyone who glances at that would think we got 125% of our operating budget from the federal government.
Well, if you take a look at the numbers.
The number up above, yeah, the 4.3 million is 127.
It looks like we made it. Yeah, but I'm just saying, it is confusing.
Okay. Thank you. Joni?
So then the next, uh, slide will be the expenses, same exact format. Perfect. Same exact format. So your salaries and benefits, uh, we receive six, we're at 64% of spending at $39.4 million. So what I do is I compare year to year. Where were we last March? Where were we, the March before that? And it's, it's pretty spot on, somewhere between 63 and 65% of our salaries and benefits, um, spent per, percent of the budget by March. Your next bucket is your purchase services bucket. That's 87%. That's actually pretty high. And, and the reason being is, again, a year and a half ago, when I did the budget, I didn't expect cyber charter to be a million to almost $2 million over what we have budgeted. So you're going to see that, you see the buckets, it's almost, and that happened the year before that. So 23, again, they weren't, we weren't expecting the increases in 24, also not keep increasing by a million and a half to $2 million every year. You see those big jumps and the, the largest portion of that is cyber charter, increasing at, at that high of a, a rate. So we are at 87% already in March. We will more than likely be over 100% of what we budgeted in that bucket. Also in that bucket is your insurances, um, your bond payment, the school operational budgets. But again, the majority of that is, is the cyber charter. The next bucket, supplies and equipment. You're going to see that, again, that's at 96%. That's your ESER money that the revenue came in and then our expenses came in. So they, they kind of wash as far as a cash flow, but it looks like we're going to probably be over that, in that bucket, two out of 100% because of that, um, wasn't, but those budgeted expenses weren't in there. They were in the prior year instead of this year. So if you go ahead and scroll down, this again, this is the, a deeper dive into those numbers up above. It gives you the year-to-date for 24, the year-to-date for 25, and then the budgeted amount. And then your increases, I'm sorry, your percentages off to the right. What's notable here is down at the bottom, we talked about the 4.4% of, of an increase from revenue. We're at 7.7% increase for expenses. You see, they don't, that's why, um, the budget for 25-26 is, uh, in a deficit versus a surplus. So what we will do is we will phase out the old Fun 10 reports and, um, go ahead and start using these reports going forward. But again, at the finance committee, we can kind of do a deeper dive into these numbers. Is there anything else you'd like to see? I will start doing more projection, but instead of just doing behind budgets, I'd like to do more projected. What's next year going to look like and kind of compare this, the next, the historical years to the projected years. And we'll go ahead and get into that, um, again at the finance meeting. Anybody have any questions?
Oh, oh wait.
Okay.
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 Thank you.
I would just like to say a shout out to the Central Mountain High School Keller Guard and Majoretts. They are at the East Coast, they're in Wildwood.
They are.
At East Coast Championship. So wish them good luck.
All right, next up is the financial reports. Anybody have any questions on that? Never mind. All right.
You want her to explain that again to you?
Yeah, please, you know? All right, uh, next up, enrollment report. Any questions? Okay. Next up, we have the board treasurer appointment. All right, so, basically what we're looking at is with the recommendation of the administration, okay, we would like to approve the following recommendation to the board and that is to appoint Joni, the board treasurer, effective July 1st, 2025 for a period of one year to be renewed annually as provided under section 404 of the Pennsylvania School Code. Okay, does anybody have any questions on that? No? All right. Next, uh, appointing the board secretary, okay? Well, let's see here. What is it? Here by peruse the appointment of Christine Taylor to the position of secretary to the Board of Education for K C S D for four years, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029. Does anybody have any questions on that? Elizabeth?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to stand with what I've been saying ever since the beginning of this co-mingling of secretaries. I still adamantly oppose having a secretary for the board and a secretary for the superintendent being the same person. It's a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Okay. Don't see that, but you know. All right, next, uh, appointment of voting delegates to P S B A. Okay, what we're looking to do is appoint three individuals as voting delegates to the 2025 delegate assembly meeting on Tuesday, October 21st at 2:30 PM. Do we have any, uh, individuals that want to do that? I'm considering myself. Anybody else?
I'll do it again. That's what we went to last year, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll do it again.
That's the trip to the.
Anybody else?
It's the middle of the week this year, not a weekend.
Nope, no chance. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I can't. I'm at all the week. I'm sorry.
You can bring back information. I mean, it's, I've done it once and.
Okay. All right, well, if anybody else eventually figures it out and would like to do it, please let me know. Okay, so right now we have, uh, Bill and myself. All right. Let's move on. Okay, um, out-of-state field trip.
I think all three of them are great ideas.
I want more.
Anybody have, yeah. Anybody have any questions on any of them?
Want more.
Okay, uh, procurement card users.
We need to table that because that is in policy and we, we were discussing it and we tabled it and we're waiting for the next policy meeting. And the administration of business office is going to work on the policy and return it for review in May's meeting, policy meeting. So we need to table that for now because we're not done with what needs to be on.
Okay, and I'm guessing you're going to recommend that at the voting session?
We'll see what happens.
Okay. All right. Okay.
We just got more work on it to do as well.
Okay, that's great. That'll work. All right. Um, the flex, next up is the flexible, um, instructional application. Does anybody have any questions on? Does anybody have any questions on that?
Yes, I, I, could someone please explain the history of this and?
Flexible instructional days were something that were put together shortly after COVID, as I understand it. And it's a way that to give districts flexibility. If there's students can't come to school for some reason, but we can continue instruction either remotely. This kind of idea of flexible kind of a thing. The part of the state rule is every three years you have to reapply, and this is our. When we have to do it to renew for the next three years.
Great. So it works really, it seems to work well for you, right? I mean.
It seems to work well, yes.
Great, great. And nothing's changed. It's just.
It's pretty much the same thing. We're asking to do the same thing in the same ways it was approved. I think there were some some tweaks when the original application was put in, but we don't anticipate there being any issues. And so this is for number eight and number nine.
Yeah, it'd be for the C T C also, so.
Does this apply to snow days?
So instead of doing a snow day when we're not expecting students to do things, then we ask them to log on. And you can see in the application exactly what we're asking. Students to do. We do have some days in the calendar built in that are just, we could, it's no makeup days we have built with the calendar as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're good on both those?
Yeah, it seems to work.
Okay, next up, policy, policy eight fifteen point one. Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Go ahead, Bill.
There's a lot of verbiage in here and a lot of things addressed, and the thing that I would be most concerned about is the abuse by students. In a way that would inhibit rather than supplement their education. And you know, I think we need to. Pay close attention to that and find out. I mean, it's just, they have. If nobody learns to do anything for themselves, eventually the only people that are going to know anything are the people that are telling the computer how to do what. What's going on. That's, that's, I don't think that's a good idea.
So our hope in writing this is that we're teaching the students appropriate ethical use of A I along with teachers. That's kind of part of the whole reason why we wanted to construct. Students are going to use it regardless of whether we tell them not to or or not. And any sort of accountability structure we can put up, and this is, this has happened again and again. It gets circumvented within the data.
Well, don't get me wrong. I mean, obviously, I'm not trying to pretend that. We're doing our students. A good deed. If we don't teach them how to use these, these new tools. By the same token. I think we need to ensure, we have to come up with a mechanism to ensure. I can't think of a better term, academic integrity. They should be citing their sources and even without artificial intelligence, if they, if their idea, you know, well. And go to Wikipedia and do it, you know, and just do the report. We should be, they should have to be, I think that steps should be made where they have to cite and define their sources.
Sure.
And.
This policy in no way changes that what we're already doing in that regard. We're not saying.
We are doing that already?
Yes, students are expected to do proper research and cite their sources and all that's already built into our curriculum.
All right.
And we, we also in the policy meeting discussed that. There's a lot of teachers going to be trained in certain avenues in the A I. And that's the only thing they're going to discuss.
Okay.
Can I add something to?
Quickly.
Yes, thank you. And just. I know what you're talking about and I hear you. But this was what I also said during this policy committee meeting. Was that, and this isn't new news. But one thing employers really want is they want. An individual that knows how to do a podcast, that understands A I, that knows how to navigate that whole world. So I had mentioned during the policy committee meeting, some point maybe. C T C or some other class will be specialized eventually when they're ready. Go that route. So. This is the first step and it will have to stay fluid. But I've been. It's, it's the way we gotta go right now, but I do hear you. I do hear you, Bill.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Part of the future.
No, I don't question I, again, I'm not saying that to you.
Okay.
Think we need to.
Policy eight sixteen? Anybody have any questions on that? No? All right. Uh. Minutes. Uh, policy committee minutes, questions?
No.
Facility committee minutes, questions? Okay, work session minutes? Voting meeting minutes?
Yeah. Well, I think we forgot something. I'm just scrolling through it right here. And in the voting session. Last time we tabled the transportation contract. And I made the motion. And it looks there, Mr. Johnson seconded it. To bring that to the executive session with an invite to the parents. And we must have forgot that for today's executive.
There's some other contexts that goes with that that I can't talk about here. So there's a reason why it didn't come up today, but I can't talk about that in the open session.
Okay, all right.
Do we have to?
Should we bring that up in next week's executive session or?
Not necessarily. I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
Okay.
For minutes.
All right.
Yeah, how do we change, how do we put that in the minutes that we're not doing? Because we needed to agree on that contract and we needed to discuss it.
We can't get into talking about that.
No, it's not.
In an open meeting because of. A personal nature of this. Okay. And what's involved.
All right, just curious because I've just, I'm glancing through this as we're going, and that's something we didn't do.
Okay. All right.
That's, that was my question.
Yes, Elizabeth?
Well, that's my question. Just so our minutes, do we, would someone please consider asking the solicitor? Do we need to then amend these minutes? Or can these minutes stay as is since there's no date, the motion?
Uh, no, we, this is what was done in the meeting. It's reflected what's done in the meeting. So we can't. I don't want to go back and say that we did something.
Oh, no, no, no. I, you're, no, I'm so sorry. That was communicated. I was, that's my mistake. What I'm trying to say is do we need to make a motion at our next voting meeting? To amend. Somehow word it properly. Uh, that's what I'm saying. What are the steps that, do we need to do those steps? And what exactly are those steps? Or can it stay as is?
I'm happy to check with them. I believe it can stay as.
Okay, I hope so, but thank you. Appreciate that.
How come we can't discuss it in an executive meeting?
We can do that if you like. It's the timing, it would, it wouldn't be fruitful conversation right now.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Okay, next up, S V R C S Charter School renewal.
Yes, I got something to say on.
Go ahead.
Uh, I wanna. Tell everybody on the committee they did a good job. I've been told multiple times. How easy it was. But I got. Three different emails from three sets of parents. About something that has been said. And there was a lot of concern about it. And the facts are, and I'm going to put the facts out there to put it to bed. The meetings were all open meetings to the public with the charter school. There were no private, behind the scenes meetings. It was all very open. The charter school even thanked us for doing. The open meetings. They were nice, short, sweet. We got the job done. The charter school was okay with what we did. Nobody really got shortchanged. And. For whoever, whatever is spreading the word. That we did secret behind the wall meetings, I want to state it publicly, that never happened. Everything was out in the open. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Elizabeth, were they, were they recorded? I mean, I still.
Yes, they are recorded and they are on YouTube.
Okay, because I sat there as a.
Anybody can sit and look at any one of those meetings.
Okay, I didn't know they were recording it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, bills for payment, questions?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Okay.
Imagine that, right?
I'm not saying a word, Chris. Go ahead.
Okay, I had emailed Joni some stuff and she did very good at answering me back. But it also opened up a couple more questions. There was a whole bunch of entries for. Uh, a company. And I asked Joni what it was about and she replied, the. C T C is building property services, a new shed. P S O has provided the same materials and the students are building the shed. It's a collaboration between a school operational department, the P S O and education. My question on that is, when we were back talking about Liberty Curtain and that. Building the foundation for that L E D sign. And I said, it'd be great if the C T C students could help out. And we were told, no, they're not allowed to child labor laws and all kinds of things. Could be involved and it was shut right down. But here we're having them build a shed. Why the, what's the difference?
Um, I don't recall precisely the, the, what you're describing there. What I do know is that the materials and labor to construct the, the basis for the sign. Was donated by one of our contracting groups. So it wasn't P S O that was doing it. It was an outside contractor. Outside contractors. Can't have minors working on heavy equipment and doing that sort of thing. Uh, they have to, because it's prevailing wage, it puts a lot kind of, there's a bunch of limitations on who they can hire and who they're having work on that kind of thing. The P S O shed, whole different world.
Okay.
It's a, it's a whole different way of.
I just, I saw that and I was like, whoa.
Look like.
Good.
Good.
Okay, I just wanting, just a little history for folks that weren't here, okay? When the whole Liberty Curtain thing started. I did bring up, is there any possible chance for any of the students to do any work? Or do anything? And I was told, and it was, no, I'm sorry. It was before Liberty Curtain. They were working on a different project. Please don't ask me what the project is. Doesn't matter. I had brought it up. Maybe it was four years ago that, you know, why can't we have a C T C? Consider taking this on as a project.
Elizabeth.
Well.
This was basically just explained.
Well, can I finish? Can I finish? But they, I was told that no, C T C can never do anything because of the union contract. So what I'm trying to say is we have different information out here. So. Now I don't know which ten students. Do projects around the.
There are certain, certain projects that the C T C can do.
I think it should.
I, I agree, and we all, we all agree with that, okay?
Yeah.
But there are certain things that they cannot. Okay?
Okay.
Because of, like. What Dr. Redmond just stated.
So if I could, real quick, on that particular issue. We wouldn't have had P S O build another shed. We would have purchased another shed. Rather than doing that, we had. Students at the C T C build a shed. So it's a, it's a little bit different. We're. Typically, uh, collective bargaining units don't let someone who's not a union member do union work. And this isn't, you, this wasn't union work.
Okay, well, I'm really happy about the project. Don't get me wrong. I completely support it. I just want.
Okay.
Some sort of same information.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Next thing.
Oh, go ahead.
I got a couple to ask about.
All right, go ahead.
Uh. There was a entry for Bureau of Education and Research. For a Title II conference travel. For a library conference registration of eight hundred and twenty five dollars. So I asked Joni about that. She replied to her four librarians that went to that. And I'm curious if, since we got rid of the librarians, why are we spending that money to send them to a conference?
I don't know if, um, so the conference happened before we had made the decision to make the change with our elementary librarians.
There's what?
It was a virtual conference and so there wasn't any travel involved. It was something they did online.
Okay, I just thought it was weird that we spent that money and then got rid of them, so.
It was, like I said, it was before, before we made that change.
Okay. Just next.
Okay.
Next one, Roger was, uh. Keystone Central Tax Office. And Joni explained to me. Uh, about all kinds of ins and outs on it, which I'm glad, Joni, thank you. I sent her another email for a little clarification on some of that. Uh, so I'm gonna wait for her to get back with me on that.
Okay.
Uh, the next one I had. Uh, was on a school specialty. The. She clarified that all those entries were for one student. Uh, and there was tons of them. That, and she explained to me the settlement, settlement agreement orders and all that. And how it worked. I would like for Joni to. Not now. In the near future, maybe by June's meeting to. Send us out, how many different student settlements are we dealing with? And what the amounts of them are. And the frequency. She sent me this back of. How much this students involved and it goes till they reach a certain age. But.
Right.
I'm curious, how many different settlements like this do we have out there that are pending?
How long would that take to do something like that, Joni? Not long? Okay.
Just so we know what we're looking at financially.
Okay.
Then there was another entry for the Sons of Italy. Uh, for. The retirement dinner venue, four hundred and fifty dollars. And she advised me, it's a Sons of Italy reservation for the retirement dinner in the spring. Uh, could we get the estimated cost that that whole party is going to be?
Uh, we have that number. I think it's. Thank you, twenty two hundred.
Twenty two hundred?
Yeah.
And what fund does that come out of? And is the union paying for that? The.
It comes out of.
Teachers or the taxpayers?
Comes out of the general fund. The school district pays for that.
So the taxpayers are paying for the retirement party?
To thank, to thank the teachers for their service to our community and our students.
Just curious where it was coming from.
Not just the teachers, it's support.
Yeah.
Okay.
Faculty.
All retirees.
And then, uh. The last one I had, I questioned a thing called. Survey Monkey. A membership fee. She explained to me the Survey Monkey is a survey creation tool. That we use to gather input ideas, feedback through electronic surveys. Is that a yearly fee?
Yes.
Or, okay. Is that something we could eliminate and let our own I T department do that?
No, it's a, no, it, the, this survey creation and distribution tool. I, I would not ask our, our I T department to do that. Not that they're not capable. But it's, it's really time intensive and to have a program that really does all that stuff for you, collects it. And gives you analytics on it and all that sort of thing. It's, it gives us a lot of really good data when we put those surveys out.
Okay, I'm just curious.
It would cost far more in personnel hours. Than it would be, but than just purchasing the.
All right, that's it, Roger. Okay, Elizabeth?
Okay, thank you. If I can just kind of add on to what, now I don't have it in order. Um, I'll just go by my, by notes. Please bear with me. Um, I, again, the settlements, yes. Um, a nameless list and what the, also could we add? When the student is aging out, what year?
I, I hesitate to do that. I don't want to make it identifiable.
No, no, we don't want to, there are no names, no names.
Even so, the, the number of students with I Ps who graduate in a particular year.
Okay.
Okay, next.
All right, maybe in executive session you can tell us when those, uh, age out. Um, the parting. And please, this has come up before multiple years. And please, this has come up before multiple years, yes. As a board member, I completely support having a celebration when someone is do- changing their life. But I, I'm sticking with what I've been saying from the get-go. That should be out of their own fund and it shouldn't be coming from the taxpayers. That's just my opinion.
Okay, and next?
Um, and also, I had a question, there's NITNee Learning Services on here, page ten. And River Rock Academy, page twelve, which is all fine, all good. But when we first talked to River Rock Academy, they were going to set up some sort of schedule with administration, I believe, where they're gonna come with an outcomes and assessment report for us. Now, I know it's been, that we've only been with them a short period, but I don't know, was that ever decided? You can just let us know? Is it gonna be annually, biannually? And then, NITNee Learning Services is also part of that conversation, so.
Mm-hmm, I remember that.
End of the year. We're not at the end of the year yet.
No, that's why I'm just saying, I wasn't sure, so, end of the fiscal year or end of the school year, end of the?
Well, it would be after the school year, you have to have time to look at the data and compile it and bring it together, so it won't be on the
Like maybe September or something like that, something or, okay, that's great, just keeping it on the radar. And, um, this is something that I believe was talked about a while ago and this is for future. Just to put in a little, little noise out there right now, a little bug in your ear. Legal expenses, we still don't know how are, we're, how much we're spending in total on legal expenses, it's never broken.
Wasn't an email sent out on that?
Yeah.
You did get an email.
Yes, okay, so that's already been addressed.
Not in the way I'm going to communicate it, please, Roger.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, categories of legal expenses for student issues, another category. Um, employee issues, related to tax office issues, we'll be another one, and then two subcategories. One where it was initiated by the superintendent, one that it's initiated by the board. The reason why I'm saying this is if there could be somewhere possibly in our policies, we might consider discussing at the policy committee, so the board has something to evaluate. Looking at this, and there might be some correlation there, data might be found over years of looking at this data. I don't know what the answer is, but I just know it's an expense. And we don't ever evaluate it.
Well, maybe that should be something brought up at a policy committee then.
Okay, that sounds great.
Not right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, proposed final general fund budget. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, next, UPMC PT contract. Any questions on that? Elizabeth?
Um, Dr. Redmond, if you would just keep us abreast, I just read, I heard an article um, about funding might change. So I'm assuming that this position is done through some sort of state or federal funding? Or is this out of the, don't have to answer it now, but just. So it is federal funding?
No. So, so federal funding doesn't come anywhere close to covering, uh, our, our costs or for students with disabilities, nor does state funding.
Okay, okay, thank you, so this is, okay, got it.
Okay, lunch prices, twenty-five, twenty-six, questions?
I'm glad it's free.
Okay. The PRFSD bid participation agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six, any questions on that? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Um, can someone just explain this in just a summary report, like this is just a, a regular thing, nothing's changed?
It's a regular thing, we have to, um, part of our, our food commodities and all that sort of thing is, uh, this is sort of bid process, so we're in this consortium to participate for a food service to, uh, work in this, this bid agreement.
That's great, so stuff, okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, judicial sale. Questions? PSBA membership. Questions, Central?
Yes.
Yes, Elizabeth?
Okay, the last time we did this and the time before that, um, I don't see it listed here and maybe it's in the all-access package, but they did have, um, a grant access portal, that if you do one of those packages, and we used to get it, I mean, I, I can get into it. But I don't know if this package is the same one as we did last time, where you have the portal to the grants.
It is.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Central Mountain Middle School hand dryers.
Uh, we voted that down on March thirteenth.
Right.
So why are we bringing that back up? Because?
Because I wanted to bring it up, Chris.
Well.
And I brought it to the facilities committee and I was going to give some rationale here for it. Um, I realized that.
I had the floor, I'm sorry.
You always have the floor, go ahead.
No, I don't always have the floor, but.
Go ahead, Chris, are you done?
No, I was not done.
Okay, continue.
We voted it down. And we did have in our policies, a policy that said, once it's vote, something's voted down, it's dead, it's done. And all of a sudden, that policy's gone.
What policy is that?
I, I couldn't find it, I spent an hour looking for it. I had it when we went over the, uh, thing on Character Strong, 'cause I brought it up. We had a thing in our policies that used to say, uh, when a policy is voted down, that said it doesn't come up again. We brought that up at Character Strong.
Okay, so, go ahead, Bill. I'll let you talk in a second.
I don't know about our policies, I don't remember on that, but this is, again, this is something that was addressed at the school board retreat. PSBA didn't want us to do that, but they're wrong. Under Robert's Rules of Order, you, once something's voted down, you cannot bring it up at the same meeting. At another meeting, if you wish to reintroduce the topic, you go through the same procedures. Someone needs to move to discuss it. They need a second and then discussion. And so, if we have a policy that says we shouldn't do that, I think it's a bad policy.
We don't recall it.
So.
Okay, so now, my question is, this was discussed at facilities, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's been moved forward from facilities to the board. There we go.
Well.
Go ahead, Jeff.
May I? You want?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Jeff has, I just gave Jeff the board or the, uh, floor.
I'm not really sure how to react to that, but the reason that I would like to revisit this is, as I mentioned earlier in this meeting, we had the president of the Mill Hall Borough come to us asking for some solutions to this ongoing problem. We did have, I think, and in the opinion of Mr. Hoy, our property services person, a solution to this that would probably ninety-nine percent chance of resolving the problem. If you recall, you go back a couple months back, I think it was maybe February or so, we had three representatives from Mill Hall here asking for support for their pool. The community pool. And this board was very much in favor of that. And as I was, but we decided at that point, because we did not feel, even though it's legally possible to do that, that we were able to do that from a financial standpoint. We were all in favor of doing that at that point. I think we have had a very good relationship with Mill Hall Borough over the years. As they pointed out, as the mayor pointed out and the other gentleman were here, they do allow us to use the baseball field. We use the park for our elementary students to go over and use that at the end of the year for, and for other different activities throughout the school year. They have been very generous with those kinds of things. I, I think, as I said, we've had a very good, I think, working relationship with them based upon those kind of, those kind of things. To I, I just think it, we had the paper towels, as you pointed out the last time, I would, you know, I also did a little bit of research and I would grant you that probably the paper towels from, from a hygienic standpoint are probably a little better. However, than the hand dryers, however, we've had hand dryers in this building forever in all of the restrooms. I don't recall, and in my research, there's never been any verified documented cases of the onus being caused by hand dryers. In fact, if you wanna talk about bacteria being spread, there's much more bacteria that is spread throughout a, a given area in a, in a restroom by a toilet flushing than certainly a hand dryer. Uh, we also by going this direction, not only would we correct the problem and eliminate it with a relatively cheap, inexpensive remedy, but we would also be saving money on not purchasing paper towels any longer for that building, which I'm sure is a, a, a fairly decent expense. We'd also not be sending a whole bunch of paper towels into our landfill. And I, I just think that it's pretty short-sighted when we have a solution to the problem to vote to not do it. And that, those, that's my rationale behind it. Now, if, if you don't wanna do it, I think it's very short-sighted on our part, especially because it'll keep coming back to us complaining about the same problem being dealt with over and over and over when we have a relatively easy fix.
Okay. Chris?
I don't understand why it's all of a sudden became a problem when that high school's been there since God knows when. When it was Ben, there were thousands of kids there, it was never a problem. Is there a reason that a line is plugged in, is it full of silt? Something else like that? But the bottom line is, and I have the documentation here, Jeff, and I'll have Christine make copies of it. They are prone to spreading the fecal matter you're talking about when you flush a toilet. Says it right here. Petri dishes exposed to hot air from a bathroom, hand dryer for thirty seconds, grew two hundred and fifty-four colonies of bacteria. Uh, the Centers for Disease Control don't recommend it, Cleveland Clinic doesn't recommend it, and the professors at the uh, advisory board from Harvard Health don't recommend it, I'm looking at it as a health issue, spreading germs, that's, that's it. Everybody's gonna vote however they want.
Okay.
And if you want copies of this, Jeff, I'll get Christine to make it.
That's fine, I believe you.
Okay. Elizabeth?
Oh, thank you. Um, I, I really hope we can move on from this discussion since it's, um, not a priority as far as I'm concerned, but I will say this. Um, when we were at the facilities committee meeting, um, it, it was a draw. I, I didn't wanna have it back on the agenda, but Jeff did, so I said during the facilities committee meeting, I'm not gonna stop any board member that wants to voice something during a public meeting, so I just wanna go for a record and endorse spending thousands and thousands of dollars on electric hand dryers right now. So be that as it may. Um, I was, I'm just giving you an update, I was at a, I live in Mill Hall Borough, I'm the Mill Hall Borough representative. And I was at their, excuse me, Mill Hall Borough public meeting. And of course, I was there, so the, the conversation came up just casually. And they also said inside of, that it's not just paper towels. They said it's handy wipes and also grease. So like, was very helpful to learn that during the facilities committee meeting, when we heard that, that when Ben High School was there, there was over a thousand kids, they didn't have a problem. When I was at the Mill Hall meeting, the, um, gentleman, that, one of the gentlemen has the unfortunate job of cleaning out that section of the sewer line, said it hap- just started happening five years ago. So something changed, something changed at this five-year timeline. And I feel like I've said during the facilities committee meeting, until we understand what that change was, I wouldn't invest money into anything right now. And it, so, I mentioned possibly working with the borough, they have a camera, video our lines, they're our lines, we own them, we're responsible for them. So what I'm trying to say is if, if some of the board members still wanna talk about this, I think, let the borough do a little more investigation or let the facilities do a little more investigation. And if you wanna bring this back up later, but there's a step in the middle that hasn't happened yet. Why, what changed five years ago? And also, if the full board decides to put this back on a vote agenda and the majority of the board passes it, what's Plan B? If the problem doesn't go away? It may alleviate it a little bit, but what happens if it doesn't go away? We're gonna look like, well, pardon my French, idiots for not doing the middle step. So let's give the borough a little more time. Um, unless you feel that this is a priority issue, thank you.
Okay. Next up, personnel, anybody have any questions on personnel? Oh, sorry, maximum, thank you, maximum nursing contract. Anybody have any questions on this? Elizabeth?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, if someone could just a little summary, is this a brand new or is this just a, a reoccurring?
I think we had that last year.
I think this is a recurring thing. I just can address that, thank you.
Thank you.
It's for a student, uh, that needs one-to-one skilled nursing care.
Okay, so this is, we have this currently, this is just a re-
Currently, the student is not back in the district, they're not medically cleared, but we want to have this contract in place for when they are ready to go.
Good, pre-planning, I like that, thank you.
Okay. All right, now, let's try personnel. Questions? Athletics? Questions? Student activities, questions?
Wait.
Elizabeth?
Um, was it on student activities or is it the next one, I'm, I'm so sorry, it might be the next one, bear with me.
It's usually the next one that you have questions on.
Wait, the student activities, was it that one? There's the one where it's a club advisors, oh, I'm so sorry.
The, uh, probably the quarterly report?
The, yeah, it was the under Club Advisors for Fall Approval. So I had a question.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
All right, I have a question, I don't know why this is on this, I've never seen this before. So under the one that says Club Advisor Fall Approval twenty-four, twenty-five, we have a Central Mountain High School Christian Club, L O L, Living Out Loud, with two, I'm assuming, employees, but it says it's not a club, though. So I don't know why this is on this report, or I'm just saying, please reconsider and then if you wanna do something for the voting session, I just, I'm, I'm just confused.
It's on there, if I could, it's on, it's on there, not a club on twenty-three, twenty-four, 'cause we didn't have the club then, they're trying to form the club now.
Okay.
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 So there's nothing in the past, 'cause that hasn't been a.
Oh, okay, that was very, very easy, now I, I understand, thank you, thank you.
Okay, student activities quarterly report, questions? Okay, let's see. MOU Act Ninety-three, Two-Ten, Special Education Supervisor. Questions?
Uh, is this going to add another supervisor?
It's, it's changing the position from a two-hundred-and-sixty-day employee to a two-hundred-and-ten-day employee and the entry level salary amount has gone down proportionally.
This is somebody we already have and we're just changing the number of days they're working?
If someone is retiring and when we replace that person with a new person, we feel a two-hundred-and-ten-day employee is a, a better use of district, um, funding. A better use of district, um, funding.
It'll cost us less.
It'll cost us.
How does, what's, what is the difference, uh, between roughly, just a summary, that between the, the two-ten and the.
Two-sixty?
Yeah.
It's working during the summer or not, essentially.
Okay, okay.
So that gonna mean that that position is only gonna be a two-ten?
Yes.
So it won't be two-sixty anymore, okay.
Okay.
It's something we can do with that.
What do you mean?
Do we need to fill the position again if somebody's retiring?
Yeah.
Yes.
First supervisor.
Yeah, yeah. For, for special education in particular, uh, first of all, it's our only federally mandated requirement. Uh, that we provide support for students with disabilities. So I wanna make sure we're providing robust supports for those students. Uh, I think it's important to have that position.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
Word adjourned.